This is a Village of Piattone Board Meeting for October 28, 2013. We begin by rising to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Riker.
Here.
Mr. Hupkey.
Here.
Mr. Wicker.
Here.
Mr. Hack.
Here.
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Mr. Forsyth.
Here.
Okay. Let the record show that we have a quorum present. We officially conduct business. And the first order of business being minutes from the October 14, 2013 regular board meeting. And in looking at those minutes, I have a correction.
Do you?
Yeah.
Excellent. Where are you?
Okay. Maybe I'm wrong on this. Go to page two. Third paragraph from the bottom and also the second paragraph about for special use in the B3 zoning to allow an auto body repair shop. I believe it was auto body paintless repair shop. And the same holds true underneath the, in the next paragraph where auto body repair shop, put the word paintless in there.
Do this.
Because I didn't want the record to show that we were okaying having, you know, just any kind of body shop there.
That's right. You've got to have an ordinance for it, I think.
And this was the specific.
You can't just have a spray book.
This was the specific one for the paintless auto body repair. Having said that, is there a motion to approve the minutes as corrected for October 14, 2013?
Motion.
Second. Motion by trustee Forsyth, seconded by trustee Hupkey to approve the minutes as corrected for October 14, 2013. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Present.
Okay. Motion carries and minutes approved as amended or as corrected. Under accounts payable and payroll, we have trustees, you have in your packet the payroll for the pay period ending October 12 of 2013 in the amount of $48,243.87. Under accounts payable, you have bills in the general fund totaling $37,487.48. And the motor fuel tax fund bills totaling $11,035.74. And then the water and sewer fund bills totaling $6,110.86. Total for those three categories is $54,634.8. Now, we have a motion, or we have an item on the agenda coming up to release the final payment to Iroquois Paving in the amount, it's check number 28871, in the amount of Now, I would like a motion to approve the bills as presented noting that the check number 28871 in the amount of $12,030.54 to Iroquois Paving, you held, paid if approved later in the, on the agenda. So do I have a motion to that effect?
But this statement says $11,035.74 for.
I know, because we had to pay for some of that out of our general fund.
All right.
Yeah.
I make a motion to pay the bills.
Second. Okay. Motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee Riker to pay the bills with, you know, the check for Iroquois Paving pending approval later. Please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes. Okay. Motion carries, bill paid as noted. We now come to any public comments and/or questions, if there's anybody from the public about any item not on the agenda later. We have no ones, so therefore we will do the pen. Reports of committee, the chief talked to us in the previous committee, the whole meeting, so nothing to add to that, sir? Okay. Engineers report, the engineer is not present tonight. And we don't have any updates on any of the other projects except for the fact, as noted, the paving got finished and the sidewalk, I believe, is finished too. Okay, moving on to old business. At a previous meeting, we had a request for the board to allow the middle of a fence variance application to install a chain link fence at 416 Northwest Street. The motion, it was tabled, any action was tabled at the last meeting, pending investigation review. Now, part of the review goes back to the fact that it's been five or six years, I think, now that we had a fence committee that thoroughly investigated and came up with recommendations which we have adjusted in some cases. And at that point in time, the prohibition of chain link fence was put into effect. And I believe the reasoning behind it was a stating of wanting a better quality of fence, more decorative, in the area of having the, either the aluminum or iron or whatever you want to call it, type of fencing. So, that's where it's at. For us to take any action as a board would require a motion, a second by trustees to change the ordinance related to chain link fence. So at this point in time, I call for, if you would like, if any of the trustees would like to make such a motion and a second, to do so now.
At the risk of making everyone cringe, I want to state that I think that variances are for the purpose of allowing us to determine issues on a case-by-case basis. I don't think that we need to have a general prohibition even asking for a variance. And so I'd ask that the, I'd move that the prohibition against requesting a variance be eliminated from our ordinance.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that variance requests, correct me if I'm wrong here, should not be prohibited relative to anything, or? I need clarification on what your intent was.
I may have a more general position and thought on it, but specifically with this particular issue and if there are other variance prohibitions, I guess we'll, we'll address them.
So, relative to fencing?
Relative to the language contained in the fence ordinance prohibiting variances for this chain link.
All right. So, state it so she can write it for me.
It's going to be difficult. I move to eliminate the prohibition contained within the fence ordinance that restricts applying for village, I'm sorry, strike village, applying for variances under that section.
Okay. And you're okay with that second? All right. All right. It's been moved and seconded that the, to remove the prohibition applying to variances in the fence ordinance. Is that what I, okay. The, removed? Statement. Read it as you will.
Well, mine is sketchy till I go back through the tape. But my understanding is that the motion was made to remove the prohibition of asking for a variance, the variance contained in the fence ordinance section.
Well, it's specific to chain link, is it not?
No, simply the request of variance under, under that section.
Under that section, the only prohibition is chain link to a variance, if I remember correctly.
Right. And I would just comment, I think that we have prohibited chain link fences.
Correct.
So the reason why there wouldn't be a variance to allow a chain link fence is because we don't allow them at all. There would be two ways to approach it. One would be to continue a general prohibition against chain link and allow a variance to permit a chain link, or simply to permit a chain link.
I don't intend, I'm not moving to modify the ordinance to allow for chain link fence, only to delete the prohibition against asking for variances.
So that there could be a particular case where it would be granted by the board.
Which somebody would ask.
Okay, I've got it. I, I think we have to amend our ordinance, obviously.
Well, yeah, that would require an amendment to be presented to the board. If this, if this motion goes through, it would require an ordinance amendment to be presented, to be officially adopted by the board at the next meeting.
And then you'd have to.
Then you'd, then you'd have to go through the process.
Of asking for the variance.
Yes. Okay. Everybody clear on this?
I hope so.
All right. Motion and second to remove the prohibition on variances in fence ordinance, with the understanding that a new ordinance would, another ordinance would have to be written at the next meeting. Okay? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
No.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
No.
And Mr. Hack.
No.
Split.
Okay.
You got three.
No.
He voted yes.
You got three.
Mayor votes.
Okay.
Okay, so we have four noes?
No.
You got three.
Four?
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you.
Three, sorry.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
No. So therefore the motion is defeated. Which leaves everything exactly as it is. All right. We'll move on. Next item of business is the police pension report. And we have Steve Rock here from the police pension board to present the numbers for the pension, police pension.
Mayor, board, well, we have to come back once a year for the presentation. This year our fund reached a million dollars in asset value. The investment return is 2.5 percent. The percent funded is up to 34.4 percent. That, I hate ratios at certain times. It sounds nice that it's grown from 11 percent to 34 percent, but the unfunded liability, the number right above it, is a number that I'd like you to focus more on than the percentage funding. The unfunded liability is now at $2,028,000 based upon the actuarial analysis. It's a $450,000 increase in unfunded liability over a five-year period. Roundabout way of looking at that, that is $450,000 of additional payroll expense over these five years that hasn't been actually realized because pension is part of employee costs and properly funding for pension is necessary to avoid being in situations like other governmental agencies are in. The requirement from the origination of the fund was a 40 years to get, I believe it's to 90 percent funding is the required amortization period. So there's 33 years left to go of that 40-year period to reach the 90 percent, and that's what the actuarial analysis uses and tries to amortize it over that timeframe. The items to remember about the actuarial analysis is they use 7 percent for the earnings. And if you look, our earnings actually, in light of the current interest rate environment, isn't been too bad. We were at 2.5 percent last year, up from 2.24 percent. But we also are running out on some of the longer-term CDs that we had, and our rates are going to continue to drop. Also, for a fund, I believe it's under two and a half million, enough below it to, I don't have the exact numbers, we're limited on the type of investments we can invest in. Basically, we're limited to 10 percent in stocks and the remainers in fixed investments. Based upon it being at a million dollars, it doesn't make a lot, or it's not cost-effective if those amounts to go out into the bond funds and buy specific bonds. I'm not a believer in, in bond funds, individual bonds, yes. But to diversify risk within bonds when you're dealing with a million dollars doesn't give you a lot of opportunities and your costs of doing the investments are going to end up the return. And there isn't that big of a yield spread between CDs and bonds to pay for that additional cost. So for the most part, we're 90 percent in CDs and 10 percent, 10 percent in a fairly aggressive stock fund. And actually, the reason for the high, the investment return being where it was is that the stocks did fairly well last year. So the actuarial analysis comes up with the levy requirement of $143,000. The last, basically since the initiation of the fund, the board has met the minimum requirement for the levy as, based upon the actuarial analysis. Each year I ask for a little bit more based upon a couple of analysis. The more, I guess, aggressive ask is for an additional $100,000, and that's looking at saying, instead of a 7 percent return, if we're using a 4 percent return, or, sorry, a 3 percent return, based upon the analysis, there would be a request need of another $100,000. So instead of 143, 243. Another less aggressive ask is just looking at it, instead of over the remaining 33 years, look at it just over the next year. The reality of it is, is that I'm not going to get 7 percent yield over the next year, and I'm probably not even going to get 3 percent, but using 3 percent as the benchmark, I've got a million dollars that's seemingly invested at a 4 percent, under 7 percent would be additional $40,000 request. So with that, the rationale is I would ask for a, a village contribution of $180,000 in the next year in order to keep the unfunded liability from growing and get closer to our level of funding, which is more comfortable. Alls I can do is ask. So it's up to you to fund, and the, I guess I shouldn't say that, I can do more than ask if you don't meet the levy requirement. Because there are some new provisions where the pension boards can actually get first grab at state funds in order to meet levy requirements. But that is not an issue, and you've always met the levy requirement under the actual funding. But in the event you elected not to fund at the $143,000 level as a board member, as a board of the pension fund, we would have no option but to send a letter down to the state and request make up of the, the amount of the requirement. But I don't think I can send a letter down requesting anything more than the bare minimum requirement than the attorney shaking his head on that.
That's true. Yes. Historically, for the sake of reminding the trustees, we got into this predicament of being behind because of creating a local pension fund whereby the money that was, that had been paid into the IMRF, which was where all the policemen were at that point in time, prior to the creation of this, they could get back what they had paid in, but all the money that the village had paid remained in the IMRF fund. We could not be drawn in to go into this pension fund. So that, the gap between the liability and, it's not that we were cheap rotten people, the creation of a local fund took all the money that we had been saving for pensions and took it out of our control.
It remained in the IMRF.
Right.
And you had, basically had a pension holiday from IMRF, that, those dollars were there, and you were adequately funded in IMRF for a period of years, well, until about, what was the stock market crash, 2006?
Yeah.
And eight in that timeframe, and then no longer was there adequate funding in IMRF because the investments in IMRF were short. But the, yes, the creation of the local police fund, which is, was approved by the voters, but is also a requirement when a community reaches the population of 5,000.
We're not quite there yet, but we're, we would have been there within the next five years.
Yeah, when the, when it was approved by the voters, I think it was anticipated it was going to happen sooner than what it has.
You count it, it was a lot better.
So we've had a little slowdown in, in population growth. But the only thing that came over to the police pension for investments were the contributions that the police officers for federal deductions had made into IMRF. All other matching contributions by the village remained in IMRF. So it's, takes a while to build up when you bring the lives across, you know, the, the officers come across with the accrued liability with only their contributions being made into that fund. So we've got some time to, to work, and the way they've structured it is then you have 40 years in order to get to, I believe it's 90 percent funding level.
And one thing, I know Mr. Rock, being on the pension board since it's been created, is IMRF can set their rates yearly to the cost of. The local pension fund cannot. You know, they, they increase their rates based on stock market return, and that's all set by you being a member of it. That's totally different than what you pay for it, but you know, when the, the local pension fund does not have the flexibility because of stock market issues to raise the rate that the members pay. The only thing is the actuary reports will report what the, as Mr. Rock does, so.
I think it's fair to say that the pension board and the village board are in a, in a situation where to make the unfunded go away would put an undue burden on the taxpayers of this community to try and do it in a short period of time. And we have been funding based on the actuary numbers supplied by, I think, the state treasurer's office.
No, actually, we have a actuary, an actuarial firm does it, TWS Actuaries.
And that is the number that we, in round numbers, we have been funding for it because to go any other way, among other things, in a tax-capped county would decrease the funds available to, for all other purposes in the village. I know, it's been interesting, I've been, I'm part of the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus of Chicago, and police and fire pensions and other things have been a major subject with potential legislation downstate in terms of how things go. And the larger communities are facing huge deficits compared to ours. So I'm expecting that there are going to be some changes in pension laws within the next couple of years because many of the larger communities are going to be stuck pulling money out to pay, to fill the gap and taking that money from their general So, yeah, we're, we're at that point. To David's credit, David's background in the banking business has really helped us, I think, have a very good focus as a pension board on the reality of what good, sound funding is, even though we always ask this more. But again, we're limited in how we can invest the money in order to earn interest. You know, I won't make jokes about Bernie Madoff or anybody, but we can't go for a lot of risky stuff. There, there are parameters as to how your portfolio has to be and what, what it can fit, and.
Are those home rule restrictions or pension fund restrictions?
Pension specifically.
Yeah. Is it two and a half million, is that the number?
Yes. And the pension act has provisions in it that, and there's another statute too, I can't remember the name of it right now, that limit the investments that they may make by, by category based upon the amount of money that's, that they have.
Yeah, we, I mean, one avenue that, and probably will be before the two and a half million, probably when we get close to the million and a half to 2 million, is start to looking at investment-grade bonds. But at a million dollars, there's not a big enough spread between investment grade and CDs for the type of tranches we would be looking at to make up for the investment costs. And so it's, we're, but we're probably going to be starting to reach that in another year or two. We'll have. We'll have that opportunity to start looking at maybe some 30, 40,000 dollar tranches and some investment grade bonds.
And, and you know, to the credit of the makeup of the current members of the force who are paying into this, they're younger people. It'll be a while before they collect.
As you had to a notice, which is the same as the prior year.
Yeah.
And with this smaller fund, the biggest, to be honest, investment risk isn't the biggest risk with this fund. It's a life pool. If we had a injury, death on duty, that would just be, you know,
It's devastating.
Would be devastating to the fund. Because there's really no good way to obtain insurance, the cost of that. So we're running that as a risk within the fund. But that is the biggest, to me, that's the biggest risk, much bigger than investment risk. When you get to larger funds with larger life pool, then you've got that risk spread out across your life pool. Arguably, I think we're a fairly safe community, hopefully.
He looked at this.
Those risks are somewhat mitigated. But if, you know, you know, an officer getting T-boned out, you know, in an accident, you know, that, that isn't, that can happen anytime anywhere. And that, that's a fairly substantial risk and cost to the portfolio if that were to happen.
Okay. This is informational. Trustees, if you have any questions, you can ask him. There's no action that's taken place at this point in time.
Just one more question for you, Mr. Rock. So I think consistently, we've actually gone a little bit above the request that's been made on an annual basis, but the unfunded liability is still growing. So are we, even though we're actually contributing slightly more, we're still losing ground?
That has to do with the.
Investment return.
Right, but that is what's happening though.
Correct.
And the, it's based upon a 7 percent.
That's unrealistic.
7 percent return is expected, but it can't happen in the climate.
Right.
If, if the economy gets really good and we start getting it, that will shorten.
Right.
That's why my, you know, the, my pie in the sky was for the extra 100.
Right.
But just on a year-to-year analysis, additional 40,000 for this year. If that would have been in last year, would have been, still would have been a bit short. And it still would have grown, but it would have been closer. And keep that from growing too much more. But I also understand tax gaps and the impact of levy there. You know, the, the one thing that I've said potentially would happen with tax caps is to exempt out pension from the tax caps and let that be a separate levy. I believe Park District's kind of won that little challenge a couple of years ago with the special rec. I think they got it pulled out of tax caps in the Park District, so I believe that was the case. If they were to pull pension towards, out of tax caps, that would free up the ability to handle certain things. Another potential avenue is to go down a path of a referendum, which I know nobody really would like to do. But that might be an option to look at, is to actually go with a referendum to obtain financing and fund in the pension fund and pay it back with a specific levy. It's been a while since I've looked at the bond amortization of the village, but I think that the sewer plant is probably running out here or has.
Three or four years, yeah.
So if it's three or four years out, that might be a time to try to schedule and get approval to extend a new bond issuance and tack it basically on the back end of the completion of the sewer bond. So when it runs out, taxes would stay the same. It just, instead of paying off the bonds for the sewer plant, funds would be going in to make up the shortfall in the unfunded portion of the pension fund. Just as a, as a suggestion.
Or it could go for other things.
Well, that'd be, that'd be an easier sell to the public than trying to do a referendum or anything like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, referendums aren't fun to do. Have on a few of them.
Well, thank you, David. Thank you very much for your service and for your information today. And we're going to move on further down the agenda. The next item has to do with the releasing of the retainage for the Iroquois Paving. What we referred to earlier when we said, talked about paying the bills. And we have finished the 2012 paving project. One of the residents during our committee of the whole was praising us for some of the paving that we've done. Contractor has been paid except we held back 5 percent, which was typical to make sure that everything was back to the way it needed to be. The retainage is in the amount of $12,030.54. So I would entertain a motion to release the retainage amount of $12,030.54 to Iroquois Paving Corporation for the completion of the 2012 paving project. 2012, is that 2013?
2012.
2013.
So last year's paving.
Oh, that's right.
Without the retaining for a year.
All right. Thanks for pointing that out. So this is from last year's project?
Yes.
Thank you. So I have a motion to the effect.
Second.
Motion by trustee Forsythe, seconded by trustee Hubkey to release the 2012 paving project money, retainage of $12,030.54 to Iroquois Paving Corporation. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
And Mr. Hubkey?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagg?
Yes.
And Mr. Wickers?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries and the check will be issued to Iroquois Paving in the amount of $12,030.14. Now, related to the current project.
This, when the, the next item is the MFT resolution. And this goes back to the, again, to the 2012 paving project. When the village uses motor fuel tax funds, projects, the board must adopt a resolution stating the purpose and amount of those projects. Reviewing the resolution, the 2012 paving project, engineering costs were paid from MFT funds but were not stated in the original resolution. This resolution supplements the original resolution and authorizes payment out of MFT funds. It's a, cleaning up some paperwork is basically what it's doing.
Okay, so this would be Resolution 13-R13. Can it be even more 13s? The supplemental resolution authorizing additional work and costs totaling $29,441.32 in motor fuel funds for the 2012 paving project. Is there a motion to the effect?
No motion.
Second. Motion by trustee Wickers, seconded by trustee Forsythe to adopt the MFT supplemental resolution authorizing additional work and costs in MFT funds for the 2012 paving project. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wickers?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagg?
Yes.
Mr. Hubkey?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Motion carries and that Resolution 13-R13 is officially adopted. Next item has to do with a conflict, impossible lack of a quorum for a couple of meetings coming up. We have our next meeting, which is scheduled for November 11th, which is also Veterans Day. And we have the option of holding the meeting on that day as scheduled or rescheduling it historically the following date, which would be the Tuesday. Or we could cancel the meeting. The second holiday, Thanksgiving, is not in direct conflict, but it's the same week as our last board meeting of November. And the question becomes, do we have a reasonable expectation that we will have a quorum for that meeting, which is? Look at your calendar, tell me exactly what the date is.
25th.
25th? Is it 25th?
Yes.
Okay. So, what's the pleasure of the board for the next meeting, which is November 11th, Veterans Day, a Monday? Is there, would there be a problem with folks attending?
There won't be anyone.
Okay. So one board member not present?
I'm on vacation there, Wick.
Two board members not present?
Make a motion, we cancel the meeting.
Mr. Wickers, are you just not here Monday or you?
Tuesday's fine.
Okay, Tuesday's fine.
Tuesday's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll motion to move it to Tuesday.
Okay.
12.
Okay, so we'll make a, Forsythe. Motion by trustee Forsythe to move the meeting to November 12th, seconded by trustee Hubkey. And we'll put all notices that need to be made into the proper places. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Hubkey?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Wickers?
Yes.
Mr. Hagg?
Yes.
And Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries, so the November 11th meeting will officially be moved to November 12th. Same time, same place. All right. Question relative to the November 25th board meeting, which is the week of Thanksgiving. Anybody planning to be gone? Let's put it that way.
I have no issues with that date.
No, again, none at all.
Okay. So it looks like we'll be, have a quorum for that meeting, therefore, that meeting will be conducted as scheduled. Thank you. And you will note to all the right places about the changes. All right. We now have, need to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Hubkey to go into executive session for the purpose of pending litigation, seconded by trustee Hagg. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hubkey?
Yes.
Mr. Hagg?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
And Mr. Wickers?
Yes, okay. Motion carries, we will now go into executive session for pending litigation.